Yeah. People worked hard.
Call the meeting to order, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call Jill.
Frank Carini.
Here.
Mark Merhalen.
Here.
Kelly Gannier.
Here.
Mike Dudzik.
Here.
Cheryl Surniglia.
Here.
Meredith Whitman.
Here.
Brianna Allen Kaiser.
She is bill today.
Paige Stewart.
Here.
Kara Meyer.
Alright, good evening everyone, thank you for joining the November tenth board meeting. Just a little asterisk here, we're trying to show it, we're having a little technology issue, so we're hopefully, Plan B will come in, but if not, we're gonna have to postpone certain ones and put it on a different agenda, so more to come as we play through this, so. Right to the agenda items, board meetings and operating norms for the board members to recognize and obviously reference all the items below. Next, number five, approval agenda, I need a motion.
Surniglia moves to approve the agenda for today.
Dudzik seconds.
Alright Cheryl, the floor?
Nothing to report.
Anybody else on the board, any quick? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion's passed. Aquatic Center update?
Yes, we'd like to invite Kyle Robers up from Nexus, he's gonna give us an update on the work of the pool and the construction schedule, where we're at. Unfortunately, like I said, we don't have a screen, so.
Off of memory. Okay, so, I guess I'm good. The pool is underway, we got through the utility relocations and footings and foundations are starting to go in. Starting shortly, we'll start masonry walls, precast walls are now in production, starting this week, so. Kinda moving forward, the footings foundations in, we're hoping to be done with footings foundations by the end of next week. Then masonry will start as soon as we get the building permits through the city, we had a little holdup with the state review. So that's been all settled, now everything's been submitted to the city, so we're now waiting on building permits. Soon as we get those, we'll start construction, everything coming out of the ground, so. Everything has been going pretty well as per plan so far. And the, right when we get all the building permits in the next week or so, we'll be in good shape and continue to go. Building throughout the winter, starting getting the roof on about January into February, and then kinda going from there. Overall budget update for the project. Forget the numbers for each bid pack, but overall, the bids came in roughly about eight percent, a little over eight percent under budget for all four bid packs so far. There's only one remaining bid pack left to bid out, and that is the infill and kinda rework renovation area of the existing pool, which we will, we're starting to work on design now. So overall, looking at about eight percent under budget for the entire pool project so far to date, so that money will be kept in contingency and as we move forward in the project, we'll kinda see how things look moving forward, so. Said, coming up next, CMU walls, masonry walls, the precast walls are scheduled to start going up early December, so that's when things start coming out of the ground, you're gonna start seeing them from the outside throughout the parking lot. All the water utility and our utilities have been relocated, so everything is moving as per plan, as per schedule so far, and hopefully move that way, so.
Oh, real quickly, oh I'm sorry, percent completion of the project so far?
Uh, we're roughly about twelve, fifteen percent completed, like I said, the big thing was getting a lot of that, there's a lot of dirt that got moved out of there so far. But that's a small part of the project so far, there's a lot of work happening so far, but there's, we're about fifteen percent.
And percent of contingency used at this point?
So far, we have not had to.
Now, when, when will that last bid package go up, or?
It'll probably be, I would say we're shooting for spring, late spring sometime. We're not gonna start any of that work until after the pool is completed, so that everything, we're gonna even kinda put a buffer in there to make sure that everything gets moved over. We're fully operational on the new pool, and then back in and renovate.
Alright, thank you.
The plan is, like I said, kinda late spring.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I just ask, the Meadowview team that's here, are you able to do this without the video presentation, or the PowerPoint presentation?
Okay. Alright.
Alright, you're up.
You're up.
Meadowview.
We bring Prince Belisa Resner and her team from Meadowview.
Do you have copies of it in front of you to like, see the?
No. No. We can get it later though, that's fine.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. So, unfortunately you won't be able to see what, what we have in front of us, but when you do, so today I have part of my guiding coalition with me today, and my learning coach Marcia Ash, and one of my first grade teachers, Ashley Seibert, who is a first year teacher, and volunteered to come here with us today. So I thank both of them for being here, and for Julie Jostin, who is here as our cheerleader.
So, I'll first talk about our mission and vision, our mission is, we will collaborate to ensure that our school community thrives academically, socially and emotionally to reach high levels and become lifelong learners. And then our vision is to create a welcoming and supportive learning environment that fosters real life skills to help support our students in our mission and vision. We have the Mustang Way, which is making sure we're respectful, responsible, and safe.
And we have some adorable pictures of our students on the next slide. As a point of pride, our, we do try to really foster leadership, even at a young elementary age. And so, some of the student groups that we have are ambassadors, who are fourth graders, who really focus on community. They work with, they go to the Elizabeth Residence to visit, they gather food for Salvation Army, they'll be doing that soon this year. Last year, they collected well over two thousand donation items for Salvation Army. And this year, they're actually expanding out to be peer mediators on the playground and helping out in classrooms. So those are ambassadors, we have our cadets, who are fifth graders, who are really just role models for the building, they focus a lot on safety. They help our kindergartners, first and second graders in the lunchroom, and traveling through the hallways. And then two of our leadership groups came out of actually our second grade opinion rating units, and that's our recycling club. Yes, that was their idea, and they actually give up some of their recess time every day and go around and collect recycling from all the rooms, there's different teams. And then we have our kindness club, and they spread kindness, they just recently made cards and put together care packages for the bus drivers, for Bus Driver Appreciation Week, they give out tickets to students who are going above and beyond being kind, and then we have a special drawing. So we, point of pride is our student leadership teams. The next slide is our achievement, and we're, we're quite proud of our achievement on the forward exam in ELA and in math. And also our star math. We are, an area that we'd like to grow more in is our star reading for the achievement level, but we're very happy with the work that our teachers and our students are doing in those areas.
Alright, and our next slide talks about the growth at Meadowview, and while we work hard to achieve green in all those areas, which you'll see eventually, we're doing more than ever to try to get our students to grow, whether we're using reading programs or math programs, and some of the reading programs programs we're using this, this year are Read 180, we're also focusing on our personalized reading plans for kindergarten through third graders to make sure that they're growing and meeting grade level expectations. And then in math, we're using additional centers through our curriculum, as well as ST Math this year to support our students. More than ever, we're also progress monitoring our students to really watch and celebrate the growth that they're having. Our next point of pride is, we have, for our personalized reading plans, we have third, third graders without a reading plan, we have eighty-eight percent of our kids succeeding and without a reading plan, so we celebrate that, while we do have, it's not a hundred percent, we are working more than ever to try to get that number closer to one hundred.
And our grade level teams this year are focused on one element of our PLC continuum, which is really focusing on monitoring the learning of their students. So this is the first year that we're tracking that, there's areas, there's five developing areas, and then there's seven sustaining areas. And so right now, as we said, we're just starting, all of our, all of the developing areas, our teams, at least one grade level team has evidence of work in that area. But our goal for the end of the school year is that all six of our grade level teams have evidence in all of, at least those developing areas. And we do have some teams that have evidence in some of the sustaining, but our goal for this first year of tracking it is really to get that, that foundation in the developing areas for our staff. The next is our emotionally healthy schools, and our, our goal, as I'll talk about a little bit later, is really focusing on behavior. We do have some areas in the red, which we never wanna have, but the sample sizes are so small, the data that's pulled in, in this presentation is from Infinite Campus. And at our elementary level, we really don't have a lot of referrals that run through Infinite Campus, a lot of our behavioral referrals are, we call them minors, so we track them on a Google Doc, and actually, over ninety percent of our students are successful with just our tier one PBIS expectations. And so very, a small percentage of our students actually need interventions in the way of behavior, so we are proud of that. As well as our attendance rate, which are in the, the green and the blue area, and our office staff, my office staff really has high expectations, they're really on top of sending letters out and communicating with parents, and I think that does really help with our attendance rate, and of course, supporting families that might need that. So our school improvement plan, Marcia will talk about our top goal, our top two goals.
In our math and literacy goals, we're focused this year on our projected growth scores for our students. So everyone, no matter if you're higher, low, wherever you are as a learner, striving or not striving, we'll try to get you into your growth goal. Everybody has a goal set individually for themselves, and that's how we did our school improvement goals this year, based on the projected growth score for math and literacy.
And then as I mentioned, our PLC goal is really to get those teams to have evidence in every area of the developing levels on our rubric, so there are five of them, so we want all six of our grade level teams to have something in each of those areas. And of course, beyond if they can in the sustaining, but for sure developing. And our healthy school goal, again, is focused on behavior, we really focused in on our playground incidents, and we'd like to decrease majors and minors combined from thirty-eight to thirty, and that data, our starting point was, we looked at our data from last school year.
All of our individual teams, our PLT teams, kindergarten through fifth grade, have set goals that feed into our overall school goal. So actually this year, all of our teams chose a literacy goal, so all teams are focusing on literacy to support our school improvement literacy goal, of just improving that growth goal by students.
And some of our action steps for the academic areas of literacy and math is really the work that we're doing in our grade level teams. So we have a PLT hub, we call it, and it houses all the data and essential standards and the plans for the school year. And we use that to look at student data, analyze data, make some steps for interventions, and also just talk about general planning for their tier one instruction. And then every month, we meet with each of our classroom teachers individually at our student intervention team meetings. And during those meetings, we really look closely at student data and talk about how we can support those teachers with individual students, again, for interventions for either academics or for behavior. For our healthy school goals, we have our PBIS tier one team, which is made up of teachers, and we do have one support staff member. We meet regularly, again, to look at our behavioral data and make some decisions on where do we need to reteach, either whole school, or maybe there's focus areas, playground, lunchroom, wherever we're seeing an increase in incidents happening. We also have our PBS tier two team, which is a little smaller team, that meets every other week, again, looking at behaviors, but more, again, that kind of the smaller group of students who we're seeing some repeated behaviors happening. And we put together either individual or small group interventions for those students. This year, we also have parents who work on the playground, so they help to reinforce some of those expectations, they have all of our PBIS expectations, and so they can work in the lunchroom, and it's just another pair of eyes and kinda building that, that community at Meadowview. And then finally, we do have some enrichment opportunities, I know we talked a lot about intervening on behaviors and academics, but some of these are district opportunities, like Battle of Books for our second through fifth graders, Continental Math for our second through fifth graders, Art Dosent, which is at every building, but, and Lego League, we have a Lego League team this year, which we're proud of for the second year in a row. But we also have art enrichment, our art teacher pulls students from kindergarten through fifth grade during some of their intervention or what I need time, and does a variety of activities, a lot of them connect to our tier one CKLA curriculum. And then last year was our first year of doing the hydroponic gardening, our second graders took that on, you'll see a picture of them in the slideshow of them serving some of their product at lunchtime to students. So we take pride in a lot of those extra things that we're able to offer, even our littles at, at such a, a young age, so. Thank you, that's a little bit about Meadowview Elementary.
Questions, anyone? Yes?
Um, I was wondering, what kinds of things are you doing as far as behaviors, what's, what are some of the things that you're doing for the playground? When you said your, your, your goals, what are some of the interventions that you're doing for?
So for the playground in particular, one of, kind of the first thing, if we notice areas, like we've had to do in the past, if maybe it's a certain grade level where, where we see a lot of incidents, we'll pull that grade and do some reteaching of just the basic expectations. And then from there, it really goes into, we have what's called check and checkout, then it becomes more like, very individualized to students and what supports they need. So it might be check and checkout, where they have kind of a chart of, it's, it's very positive of when they're meeting expectations, they'll earn points on a, on a document that they take home and communicate with parents. We have mentors, sometimes there is groups that work with my guidance counselor to work on particular skills, so it kind of is more individualized at that point for students. Thank you.
ST Math, how, have you, I know you started it, but how do you like the difference versus obviously the past?
Actually, the kids really are enjoying it, it's a lot about spatial reasoning and problem solving. And one of the challenges they have is that there's not a lot of direction, so the, the kids are more experimenting with things. But overall, the students really seem to like it.
Is it a combination of online with, with our book also?
This is just online.
On online?
Yeah.
That's what I thought, okay, thank you.
Yeah, you bet. But with teachers to support, you know, if they see problems arise, or, you know. Right, Marcia looks at the data and sees some things, they, opportunities for reteaching in small groups.
Appreciate it, thank you so much.
You for the hard work.
Is the West Middle School?
Jeanne Hibler, do the presentation without?
We can come back to you then. We'll go to number eight on the public input and come back to please, and obviously, thank you for your patience with that, and West Middle School also. So public input, recess form a portion of the meeting to entertain comments or questions on the agenda items. Again, personal attacks against other persons, whether present or meeting, are not appropriate, will be ruled out of order. And we wish to model for our youth and communities, sharing ideas about issues of kindness and civility. And we're, you're not donate time to other speakers, you're allowed three minutes, and two minutes and thirty seconds, I'll raise my hand. You have thirty seconds, thirty seconds to complete your public input. And then the actual public input is only thirty minutes longer, and if anything else, you can write the board, and we can put it on possibly the next agenda item. So first one on there is Alec. Again, Alex, you got three, you got three minutes. Go ahead.
Alright, um, good evening, members of the board, I'm here on behalf of the Oak Creek Education Association to address some concerns regarding elementary parent teacher conferences. We are dedicated as a district, and I know you share this with me, to maintaining the highest quality of family engagement. Honestly though, but our, our current structure, three sessions totaling thirteen and a half hours, heavily weighted towards evenings, is, it's unsustainable for our staff. About two weeks ago, we initia, or we sent out an email to all of our elementary teachers. The email contained a survey, and about, or as of this morning, sixty-five percent of our staff at the elementary level has responded to it. And the data confirms that this is not just some isolated issue with a handful of teachers, this is a pretty systemic issue. First, our initial survey shows that nearly six, or seventy-six percent of elementary staff prefer exploring an alternative schedule. Specifically, there's been a lot of emphasis on a one evening, one daytime conference session model. And the reason is clear, consistently working until eight thirty PM after a full school day leads to incredible exhaustion and significant burnout for those weeks. We believe that this burnout directly impacts the quality of these crucial parent meetings. Additionally, our neighbors and other districts have managed to successfully implement different models. Districts like Cudahy and Union Grove, both have seven and a half hours total of parent teacher contact. And they are, and they incorporate a full recovery day for their staff immediately following this conference, those long nights. Wawatosa has a twelve hour model, but that does include significant daytime blocks. Oak Creek's current thirteen and a half hours stands out as excessively demanding, and really lacking a lot of staff relief. We believe our dedic, or our dedicated educators deserve a schedule that, that respects their time and their energy, allowing them to approach every conference rested and prepared. Therefore, the Oak Creek Education Association, we urge the board to immediately form a collaborative group, including elementary representatives, to adopt a more sustainable practice. Our immediate goal should be implement a model incorporating either staff prefer, or the staff preferred one, or one evening, one daytime split, a staff recovery day, or a reduction in the, or the amount of time on these long nights.
You're up on that time wise.
I'm up?
Yep.
Oh, my apologies.
Yeah, no worries. Thank you. Jeanne Hibler? Marjane, you got three minutes.
I have three items, the first one is on agenda item number four. I like to read the statement, it's the sixth bullet down on the agenda. The board president, vice president, or superintendent designate, when appropriate, may respond to any and all official and public inquiries directed to the full board within three business days, providing official statement and responses on behalf of the full board. I would like to understand the rationale for that one in particular. Policy number one four one states that the vice president shall carry out the duties and responsibilities of the president in his or her absence, including presiding at regular or special board meetings, perform such other duties as assigned by the board. In particular, on September eleventh, I sent a letter to this entire board, each individual board member's purse, uh, school board email, and I didn't get a response. Tomorrow will be two months since that email. Now your statement here states that you will respond to citizens within three business days. So I have many concerns, because the, one of the items that is on there is still requesting what you all are going to do to address the Deroute Study. There are parents that are still in this district, and they have not gotten their concerns addressed. Number two, when I look at the agenda item number eight, there's a bullet point that you added there last year this time. And what's significant about that is it's during the political cycle, when we're getting into the transition of board members' terms ending. And it states, commenters are not allowed to donate or defer time to other speakers. Each individual speaker should have only three minutes to make a comment. The board president will end that time for public input, no more than thirty minutes after it begins. And any remaining speakers will then be requested to submit their comments to the board in writing, or return to the next board meeting. I've been coming to these board meetings for four years, you have not addressed the concerns. And I'm putting them in writing, and you're not responding, so please, explain to me what's the next step. Lastly, I'm really excited that tonight we'll finally hear from the school board's student representatives, their quarterly update. This is something I've been asking for two years, so I'm very, very excited. And I do have one announcement, on behalf of the Oak Creek Optimists Club, I would like to share the announcement about the essay contest with the student representatives, so that they can help promote, this is on behalf of the Oak Creek Optimists Club, there is an essay scholarship contest, so thank you.
Hey, anybody else like to address the board? Okay, next on the agenda, thank yous and acknowledgements. Cheryl.
Um, I would just like to say an early thank you to the veterans of our schools that are working in our schools, and those of our communities for Veterans Day tomorrow.
Else? Alright. Number ten, approval of consented agenda, I need a motion. A through C.
Dudzik, Dudzik moves to approve the consent agenda.
Gannier, one second.
Like you have the floor?
Okay.
Anybody else? And then restating the motion on consent agenda as present, uh, consent agenda, all in favor say aye.
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 All say nay, motion's pass. Number eleven is skipped. Guys are still working?
Get the lid out.
Wanna kill the lights, maybe we'll see it better? And I'll get out of the way.
The door. You got any popcorn?
I could've brought popcorn too.
So now we're gonna go back to West Middle School.
Okay, thank you, um, so I'm Gina Martinelli, principal of West Middle School, and I'm here to talk about our school with the following people behind me, we have Cassie Conyou, who are, is our instructional coach. Amanda Stansfield is our seventh grade ELA teacher, and Katie Morrow is our EL specialist in the building.
So we are, sorry, I keep looking over there. We're proud, we are proud that West serves a diverse group of learners. We're a Title I school that also has eleven percent students with disabilities and twelve percent English learners who speak over twenty different languages at West with a total enrollment of five hundred and thirty-one students.
Some points of pride that we have over at WMS is we have five hundred and sixteen students to celebrate. A hundred percent Tier One PBIS implementation, a hundred percent Tier Two PBIS implementation. We were rated a nine out of ten on Great Schools. We have over twenty student clubs and over twenty languages spoken and sixty dedicated staff members. So just a highlight and a shout out from this summer, we had twenty-two of our choir students that sang on stage with Foreigner at Washington County Fair in July.
So now we're gonna talk about different elements of our school improvement plan. So we create the school improvement plan as part of our building guiding coalition. And we created together and we're gonna break it up into some subsections here.
The first two sections are for math and ELA. So when we're setting these goals, we're looking at our state testing patterns and data. So for math, by the end of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, the percentage of students who will score either high growth or high achievement by the end of the year will increase from sixty-nine percent from last school year to seventy-five percent. And then for ELA, our goal is that by the end of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, the percentage of students who will score either high growth or high achievement by the end of the year will increase from seventy-six percent from last school year to eighty percent. And this is just pushing students who are either already proficient or towards proficiency. That's why we have the high growth or high achievement.
Yeah, so we obviously care a lot about our scores that are in math and ELA and our core subjects that are tested statewide. But we also care about being a healthy school and our PLC goals. So healthy schools, as I'm sure you've seen from a lot of the other schools, we are looking at our attendance and our referral data. Specifically for us, we had five hundred and sixty-six referrals last year. So we're looking for a twenty percent reduction in that, which would be four fifty-four. And for our PLC goal is we want to have a hundred percent of teams in the developing category, which is very similar to Meadowview. It's a district-wide goal that we're all working towards together. Now Amanda and I are gonna come up and talk a lot about specifically math and ELA for academic achievement and academic growth. So here's our achievement slide, which you can clearly see. So funny. So the first box is statewide assessment, which is the, the forward exam. And as you can see, we're sixty-six percent proficient in ELA and sixty-two percent in math. So math went down slightly. These are not, like, that's their, the past scores. So that's really our focus this year. And for our star achievement, that's our stars, our progress monitoring at the mid-level. For reading, it's really exciting because in the spring we ended at fifty-six percent. And in the fall, when the kids came back and tested, they were at fifty-five, which sold like less of a summer lag than ever before, which is great. And the same for math. So we're excited about that.
One thing that we're really excited about is our work that we've done with extension versus enrichment. So what we saw as an area of growth for us was working with our students who have already reached proficiency in our skills and standards and how we can push them. So there were a group of teachers in both math and ELA who worked over the summer to create curriculum, an extension curriculum that aligned to essential standards that we saw that students would need in both math and ELA in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And we created curriculums over the summer. I was part of the team that created curriculum for ELA extension. And then I also got to see the math curriculum being created and it is like so detailed. And it's amazing of all the work that was put into it. But I think the coolest part of it, I mean, all the work that was put into it was incredible, but also coming back into the summer PD in August, I think the best part, especially as someone who did put time into it, was the encore teachers who were just all in on it. It wasn't anything that we had to convince anybody of like why this was essential or why this would work. Everyone was just like, yeah, show me what to do or tell me what I need to do. It's just been really cool to see everyone just come together and do what's best for all of our students. So it's been awesome to see West just come together as one team for pushing our kids towards enrichment.
Alright, an area of pride that West always has shown is how much we're able to grow all learners who come to West. As you can see, last year on our school report card, we had a score of one hundred, the highest you can receive in the state of Wisconsin. So we're just excited that we're able to keep pushing students to grow and reach their, their growth goals. Our subgroups include groups of students who are historically marginalized. And as you can see with these groups, we continue to grow them in every subgroup. So it just goes to show you, like, the systems we have in place kind of help grow all learners at West. And so then how do we get this growth? So we have a lot of, I'm sorry. So we're consistently analyzing and monitoring data in order to move students on a monthly basis for their needs. So every month we sit down, we look at how students did on our CFAs or our Common Formative Assessments. We then move them into appropriate interventions if students haven't met their goals. Or if they've met them, how are we gonna extend their learning? So we move them into the extensions that Amanda talked about. We are constantly looking at students who need different behavior supports or reteaching areas in ELA or math. And then we have specialists who use SDI and EL targeted instruction to meet those goals as well. So the bottom line is, is we're always moving kids. They're never in the same spot for too long because they have to meet different goals throughout the whole year.
I'll kind of explain. The pictures, I know you can kind of see, like, they're blurred out. We do that on purpose because they're student names. But we wanted to show that all the boxes on the top, those are all a hundred percent of staff members. It's like all hands on deck to make it work. A lot like this presentation. Way to call Mr. Whitman. He came in out of nowhere. You know what I mean? Like, we're doing it. That, this is like very memorable, a lot of meeting at West. We have to get kids to grow. And there's a lot of barriers and like, we're going to do it. So when you look above, a lot of the teachers in those boxes are teachers that we have in the building and their specific content area. But there's also people on that list, like our health room instructional aide. She is running a reading group and she does novels and she does voices. And it's, it's unreal what everyone is doing. It's all hands on deck at all times, which really speaks volumes about the growth that we're able to get. We wouldn't be able to get a hundred percent if it wasn't for everyone.
Okay, so one of the focuses that we always have is college and career readiness. And taking a look over here, you can see that we have a focus on grades in addition to just progress monitoring that we have in general. So we have the ELA and the math scores. And then you can also see that we focus on all of our encore classes, our science, social studies, and then CTE, FIAID, art, et cetera. So one thing that I think that this points out that is wonderful is that we ensure that all students are growing in proficiency, not just in one data point, but in multiple. So you can see that in the, that we grew to a ninety-four percent in ELA. We also did maintain and then just grow just a little bit in that math score to have a C or better. This is something that we use to have like faster formative monitors as well for all of our classes, just to ensure that we're making sure that all students are prepared for when they get to the high school.
Here, over on the right, where you see like the green, red, and yellow little ovals, that is actually how the teachers do our, our progress monitoring for our Common Formative Assessments every month. So we work with our teams and we come up with, okay, what standard are we focusing on? And we actually assess the students three times to see, okay, did you get it? Not yet. Okay, how am I gonna reteach it? What do you still need? How can I help you? What do you need? And then we keep reassessing and keep reevaluating to see how can I help you best? And then we just keep improving to see how we can also improve those assessments. What did I say? So it's been a really great tool for us to see data, but also just for us to reflect on year to year of, okay, this is what we were focusing on last December. Is this what our students are struggling with this year? Or should we adjust it based on the students that we have now? So it's really nice to have this tool to have, to reflect back to each year as well.
So something else, just being the instructional coach and seeing all of the teachers doing this that I find a lot of pride in, is we're feeling comfortable talking about our data and owning that piece. And it's, we're comfortable sharing ideas and we're making it a collaborative thing. These are all of our students. And I know you guys probably hear that a lot, but it's actually something that we, we actively do every day. So it's really neat. So if you see a red box out there, that's a student that hasn't gotten it yet. If you see something yellow, that means that they're kind of teetering it and green means they're proficient. So those green students might be something we're doing enrichment with. And then those students that are yellow and red, we're pulling them in small groups. We're collaborating with other teachers, seeing how we can get them to also be in the green. And that's what you're seeing there in those target areas where they're launching like a small group in there and giving them another CFA and like helping. So it's just really cool to see this, this, this idea here of this, we actually got from one of our ELA teachers. He started doing it on his own. And then everyone just followed suit with it. And then it wound up spreading. So it's just really cool, the power of collaboration and seeing it in real life and then just seeing how data doesn't have to be threatening and it can actually just bring us closer together.
All the things that we're doing kind of lead into our PLC or professional learning community. So as the rest of the district, we've been on a PLC journey for several years now. And because this is a continuum, we are always bringing in new staff who are at different levels of learning. So based off of last spring's survey, we can see that the majority of our groups feel like we are at a six on the journey out of seven. So it feels like we're really moving along of how we, how well we understand the PLC process and how we can use it to help students grow. Like Gina mentioned earlier, our goal is for us to be at that meeting area by the end of the year. So we're already kind of well on our way.
So on this slide, this talks about what our action steps are for to get us into the developing category on our PLC journey. So as you can see, again, clearly, on the left, that we are setting up times for teachers to see other teachers teach and get in other teachers' classrooms. So that's part of our collaborative journey. And I'm gonna have the ladies behind me kind of speak about that because they've gotten the chance to see each other. I'm lucky because I get to see them all the time. So I can see all the great stuff that happens. So here they are.
So I'm really lucky too in my role. I get to see teachers teach all day, but as a specialist, I don't get to see other specialists teach. So I went and saw our Title One specialist do one of her small groups and it was run a lot different than one of my small groups. So it was kind of nice to see how she could have a group of students working independently who are, you know, have high needs while pulling a small group and working with different learners. The classroom ran really smoothly and everyone felt really comfortable, like meeting like their language or their reading goals at the time. So it was just nice to see how another specialist was kind of working in her classroom, using some of the curriculum resources that are different than what I use as a English learner specialist.
I also think a nice thing about this, it's hard and kind of awkward sometimes for people to say, oh, I'm really good at this. You should come and see me. So putting out a Google form for teachers to say, oh, this is what I do in my classroom and saying, oh, you can come and see me on these dates, so that you're expecting people to come in, makes it comfortable for other teachers from what I have heard. I will always have an open door. Anyone can come in. But I know that some people get anxious about it. But what I've really loved is I actually got to go see my other seventh grade language arts teaching counterpart, which never happens because we're always teaching at the same time. But with this opportunity, I'm able to, like, I know we're teaching the same thing. But if you've ever met her, we're very different from each other. So it's like nice to be able to see oh, you're doing this, I'm doing this, but we're teaching the same thing. So it's been a really great opportunity, which I'm thankful that Gina was able to set up for us in this capacity because we're able to learn from each other. But I also was able to talk with like a math teacher and a social studies teacher about how they pull small groups and able to do that in my classroom as well with language arts.
I just want to add that, like, it's part of our collaborative culture at West. Amanda has a class at that time. She has to find coverage, but there's nobody who's not willing to cover for Amanda so that she can go observe the other ELA teachers. So it's great that everyone's like willing to jump in and cover each other so that we can make this and meet this goal to observe each other.
And then over on the right-hand side, you can see where it says professional development. Going back to that units of learning that I already talked to you guys about, but then on the bottom right-hand side, you can see a CFA checklist. We actually use Solution Tree to create some criteria as to what we want all of our teachers to make Common Formative Assessments around. And we just launched that with East. So we're both doing the same thing. It's been a really great collaboration this year. You can see our collab, collab calendar up at the top for professional development as well. And our focus is just like coming together and creating the same thing. So our students are getting some of the same material and content. And I think that this checklist really is like the next step for us of making sure that we're supporting all students where they're at, but then also supporting our teachers where they're at in the process too. Like you saw before, they're all at different levels. And so just kind of getting everyone to raise that bar to get to that, that number six or seven.
Okay, our last goal, still with us, emotionally healthy schools. Okay, we're gonna do it. Chronic absenteeism and our attendance has been a big focus for us, especially after 2020. And as you can see, we're really, really proud of where we are now. It was been a slow roll getting back into. But I really credit our office staff and the, like, for coming in. Our office staff can name you a hundred percent of kids, their family members, their grandparents, what bus they're on, how to get there, what days they have trouble, and they get the kids into us. The teachers welcome them every day. If they're not there today, they say, we can't wait to see you tomorrow. Because if we, the more contact we have, the more they're gonna learn. For our behavior data, we are really focused on our students that have individual education plans and students of color or students who are historically marginalized and ensuring that they're not in the office for behaviors disproportionately compared to their peers. So what we do to do that is we set up, using PBIS, our Tier One systems, we set up the, a classroom setup that every teacher goes in to do so we ensure all kids get the same level of expectations. And we teach kids those behaviors and we walk them through the schools. And our Tier Two and Tier Three intervention system is actually really, really, really impressive. We have a talented guidance team, our People Services Department, that they are creating groups, the same as we do academic groups. If you have students that need to work on language with, with each other, keeping their hands to themselves. Any sort of emotional struggles of like releasing emotions, they're talking about it. They create groups and they're constantly running kids through to get them what they need. This is an example of, it kind of shows that we like to celebrate our students as well. We are a hundred percent implementation on Tier One and Tier Two for PBIS. And PBIS is really just celebrating students and doing positive behavior implementation and supports. And our favorite things to do with the kids is assemblies and fun days and just acknowledge them. We also have student of the month.
We really wanted to highlight one of the behavior interventions that came up last year. As a seventh grade team, we found that our students were particularly apathetic. We couldn't find a lot to motivate them inside the classroom or outside of the classroom and we're just really struggling. and we're just really struggling to figure out what type of an intervention to give them. So we had a special shout-out to Alan Davis, who is our, one of our PE teachers. He's a health teacher. He's also our athletic director. And he was like all hands on deck with us once this came up during one of our sit meetings. And he worked with Gina and then also the seventh grade team to like create this curriculum that helps these students that we recommended to do goal-setting, to figure out, you know, what they need to do in school, to find, to find like motivation outside of school, to figure out, okay, this is your, this is what you want to do in your career. All right, well, these are the steps that you've got to start doing now in seventh grade. And he really just took it and ran with it. And we're doing it again this year and kind of tweaking it based on the needs that we see. And he's just done a really good job with it, so we wanted to give him a shout-out. That's a check-out, or kind of like a reflection sheet that he does with his students that they do themselves, so it's not on the teacher. It's more of just checking in, did I do this? Did I get started? Did I stay on task? Did I complete my things? So it's really putting all the ownership on them, but he holds them accountable as well. And my room is attached to him, so I get to hear their conversations sometimes. So, and it's really cool to hear. So it's been a really great opportunity, I think, for the students who are involved in it. And he's done a really great job, so shout-out to him.
Yeah, for Alan Davis, I'm glad Amanda could shout him out because it truly is like the breakfast club in that room. It's like this like hodgepodge of kids, and then they're like really, they come in apathetic and they like love it. We actually had kids asked to stay from last year to this year. And we're like, no, you're exiting out. You're doing so great. And they're like, well, we'll see. We're like, all right, not to say, you can stay. So it just like speaks volumes about Alan and his character and like taking all the kids that everybody else, like, we don't know what to do. And he's like, yep, let's do it. And so we just also wanted to say that tomorrow, the report cards are announced. We are hoping and excited to see what that is. And we cannot talk about it now, but we just wanted to say that that's how we progress monitor ourselves. So thank you, and thank you for letting us wait till we projected it. Thank you to Mr. Whitman, wherever he is.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. We convene former portion of the meeting for board discussion and/or action information items. School Board Student Representatives quarterly update.
Let me get the 3D version of this. So I'd like to have Paige and Kara present. They put a wonderful presentation together.
I also sent it to all of the board members if you don't want to turn your head that way. So all of you have access to it as well.
Very proud of the work you guys have done.
Maybe put a hat on it.
I don't think we're going to resort to this tonight, so. So first of all, it's our first quarter back at OCHS, so Oak Creek High School, our only high school. So it's our back-to-school first quarter, and we have a lot to show you guys.
Surf's-up seniors and all that, so they all decorated within like the wall. And then Monday, the September 22nd, we had like the class theme, so they dressed up as like what their wall was. So we saw a lot of participation with that, which was great. And then Tuesday, 9:23, we had USA, so red, white, and blue. And then we also had the Volunteers Oak Creek Chalk Decorating Contest outside the stadium where clubs got together and had fun and decorated a little square, and they voted. And then Wednesday, the 24th of September, we had the class colors, so each class color. And then we followed that up with the homecoming parade, which a lot of clubs participated in, which was super great. And then the Powder Puff Game, of course.
And then we had Thursday, we had Mathlete versus Athlete. So people would either get to choose as a Mathlete or as an Athlete. A lot of people wore jerseys. Friday, we had our Oak Creek Spirit Day, so blue and white or anything Oak Creek. They could also, football players also wore their jerseys. We had our pep assembly that day, so we had a lot of games there. We had a lot of cheering. It was just really good school spirit. We also had our tailgate before that football game that night, which was our first one we did this year. It was a big success. A lot of kids showed up. We had a lot of yard games. We had hot dogs, chips. It was great. And then it would follow up with a football game, which of course, you know, we have a lot of school spirit there. And then finally, Saturday, it all came together at our Homecoming Dance Student Council. We planned this entire week, so it was a very long process. We started all the way from almost the end of last year. So it's a very long process, but the fact that we get to do it is what makes it so great. So of course, luckily, we get to show this tonight, all of our amazing photos of people. So we've got people at the dance. We've got our Powder Puffs. So we got our juniors and freshmen up there. We've got a lot of people dressed up there, so it's really great to see that.
And then for sports, starting off with girls swim, I had the great experience of being able to talk to Coach Joe, and he just said how dedicated and ambitious they were. And switching conferences can be kind of tricky, but they really were focusing on their personal achievements and goals and keeping mentally and physically healthy so that they can persevere through obstacles. And they just had great collaboration. He said that they were always ready, always ready to go for meets and all of that, which is just great to see that we have that like community and team.
And then we had boys cross-country. If you didn't know, they headed to state about a week or two ago, which was really good. I got to talk to Coach Soto about a lot of their teamwork. So they said their timing improved, especially like we said, being in different conferences. We have to really focus on what we have to learn and what we have to do. He said there's great team connection, which I got to see as well. I was in one of their practices. It was amazing. They all talked to each other. It was just really good. Trusting your own ability, he believes that's one of the biggest things. You are running because you believe that you can, and that 90% of the running is your mind. Of course, it involves your body, but really, if you're having a bad day and your mind is telling you you can't do it, you're not going to be able to run your best. So it's really good to have a good mindset. He also believes that there's 360 paths to the summit, so there's all these different paths to where you want to be. It depends on how many paths and how you're going to take those paths. Our last sports was boys volleyball, so Coach Dooley. He said there was a lot of, we had a new coach this year, so there was a lot of new knowledge coming in, but also a lot of new players coming in. He believed that work hard and play hard is the best thing. If you're going to work hard, then you should be playing hard as well. Don't let your work go to waste. He believed input, like we said, is key. It's not just the coaches, it's the manager, but also the players. The players are doing the work, they're on the court, and they want to do it. He said that focusing on the sport is the best thing. When you're in school, you focus on school, but when you're on the court, you just focus on your sport. Don't be worrying about that test. Don't worry about your homework. You're in your sport right now. And he believes handling things that are hard, that's a key goal. Things are going to get hard. You need to face them. It's growing up, but it's one of the biggest important things to have as a life skill. And of course, here we are, have some of them. We have our boys cross-country in the corner. We've got our boys volleyball playing up there, and of course, our girls swim and dive. Something we're going to talk about a little too is ASL sports. I got to talk to Mr. Holler and Ms. Church about this. A lot of you were there, we saw. Our first game was indoor soccer against Sussex Hamilton. It was great. Oak Creek won. But really, this was to help kids with special needs experience what varsity athletes get to do. So they got to do a media day. They had a bunch of school and community involvement. Those stands were completely packed. It was amazing to see. We got to see a lot of youth school board members there. That was amazing. And it's not just high school kids. This extends all the way out to K through 12, which is a really good thing because kids get to experience it as they grow up. We also got, the team was also on the news the other day or a few weeks ago. It was really cool to see that they got to talk more about it. And like we said, we had cheerleaders there. We had the stands packed. It was amazing. We got a team photo of both teams, and it was truly a great experience for people. And next, we're going to talk about our clubs. So we have Knights Council, Poetry Club, and Junior Optimistic Club. What we're going to talk about is what Kara and I are part of, is Knights Council. So our advisors are Mrs. Somerville and Mrs. Schaefer. This is going to be their second year here. That's them in the top right corner, somewhere around there. They have lots of Oak Creek pride. They are always honored about that. They, you will always see them dress up during Spirit Week, no matter what. If you don't see students dressing up, you'll see those two walking around the halls proud of it. They love experiencing the school spirit. They think it's a big thing for Oak Creek, and it really is. And of course, they said they're proud to be Knights. They're proud to be teachers here for a few years now, and they're just happy about it. Homecoming, like I said, was us. It was a huge success. I think every year it just keeps getting better and better, honestly. With this being my fourth year, I can feel that experience just getting more better, and it's just amazing. Another thing we focus on, expanding all of our school spirit, which you'll hear about as time goes on. A lot of more student involvement of getting students involved, not just dressing up, but being part of different things we get to do, like wall decorating. We extended that out to the entire school, not just Knights Council did that. We had many kids do it. And of course, being Knights Council, it's about the enthusiasm of not needing to do better, but wanting to do better and making the school better.
And then we have Poetry Club, which is a super fresh new club. It's supervised by one of our AP Lang teachers and English 11 teachers, Ms. R2. And the goal is to really build a poetry community for students to learn more about poetry. As it is a fresh club, like they want to get more people involved outside of English classes, which is really great, and create like that vulnerable environment, because poetry can be vulnerable. It can be something to express your emotions, express how you're feeling. So having that comfortable environment can be great for students. And then meet other students who are interested in English outside their grade level. As you know, like as you progress, unless you stem out to like AP Lit or AP Lang, you'll stay with your grade level throughout English. So having those mixtures of English and perspectives can be great and like kill that misconception that students don't like English, that it's just like a core class, you have to take it for four years, and then you're done. And, you know, it can be such a fun experience, such a great thing to express that, express yourself with. And it's a fresh club, so they're really just moving with it. Their first ever meeting was Tuesday, September 16th, so they're just trying to get the move for it and try to get more people involved. And then Junior Optimist Club. So this is working towards bettering the community with a positive attitude. Some of the key opportunities we did were like Operation Santa Claus, where we got food and gifts for families in need and then donated them and gave them to them, dressed up as Santa, and, you know, made sure that they felt like they were having a good Christmas season. Trunk and treat, you know, getting those kids involved. That was at the Oak Creek Community Center, which was great. And we offer oratorical contests and essay contests for scholarships for students who are ready to move to college. And I think this is just such a great opportunity, not only for the Oak Creek community to better the Oak Creek as a school, but also the community in general, like being able to collaborate and, you know, go in with a positive attitude and, and really try to better the environment that we're in. And that leads us into our back-to-school survey. So we sent out a Google form to all the students, and we had quite a few people respond. And some of the questions we asked were, how confident do you feel starting off the school year? We see there are a pretty good chunk that are quite confident and somewhat confident, which is nice. The freshmen are probably adjusting and getting used to those buildings and walking around. And it's nice to see that we have quite a few people that we hope will develop and get better and more confident and meet new teachers and meet new people that will allow them into the school and get more comfortable in general. And then we also asked them, how many clubs are you in, sports and academic? We see quite like a big chunk in none or one-twos and threes, which we want to make sure that people are getting involved, which is really nice. So we're hoping that as the school year progresses, more clubs, more sports will start, and more people will get involved, and we'll just have that nice Oak Creek community.
For our next part of the survey was, do you have a teacher or staff member to talk to? It's one of the biggest things for kids to have, especially at a high school. And we see a really good chunk of about 71% saying that they do, which is really nice. And that little percent, of course, this is the start of the school year. So like we said, freshmen are coming in. They're meeting these new teachers. But also, like we said, it's been a few months. Some kids need to adjust, and it's going to take time. But it's good to see that we have a good percentage there that people do have someone to talk to. We also wanted kids not just to answer a question, but to give us their actual input, so improvements and thoughts. First of all, there's a lot of no's. So there's, that's a good and bad thing. Good because that means we're doing good, like there's nothing that we want to change. But of course, improvement is such a good thing to have, is to become better. So some things that they were thinking about was hallway monitoring and passing time. That kind of goes along with tardies. It's just with the high school, with the construction going on and kids having about seven minutes, you'll see a kid running from one side of the NGC all the way to the 10-12 building. It's just a little harder for some kids, especially when there's kids who just kind of sit there in front of, in the middle of the halls. And just some kids are trying to get through. Some kids do want to get to class on time. So it's just maybe finding different ways, like teach different teachers or some people trying to move along the halls, it would just be a lot easier for some kids. Maybe even a little more time. I know it's hard to take out of class, but sometimes those kids need time to get to their class. Something with self-defense and bullying. Of course, teachers and counselors are always trying to improve that, but sometimes some kids don't agree with those ideas. And I think it's best that we hear from our students of how they feel it deserves to be dissolved. We don't want anybody hurt, but we also deserve our voices to be spoken and hear how we want to solve a problem. Another thing we want to talk about is independence and openness. I think it mostly just kind of, it's hard to do with phones. Independence, we are, growing up to be adults. Some of us are turning 18 and having a phone. It's really depending, of course, it's very rude to be on your phone when someone's speaking, but that's also that kid's fault for not wanting to pay attention. And of course, the teachers want to help the students, but it's also the student's job to be independent and see how you want to use that class time wisely. If you want to be on your phone instead of homework, that's going to reflect on you though mostly because of your grades. You could use that time to study. But instead that we have to put it up there, some kids also want to use it just in case for dependency of, we don't want to say it, but something happens. Sometimes we do want to text our parents. We want to make sure that they know that we're okay. And it's just something that we have to make sure that we want you all to understand as adults, that we are growing to be adults and that we want that independency. And of course, like we said, teachers and communication, that goes along with what, do you have a teacher and staff member to talk to? We want to keep building that. We want teachers to be able to talk to us. If we're sick one day, we don't want it to just be like, oh, well, I posted the notes. You can just look on there. Sometimes some kids don't understand the notes, and they want to be taught that thing. So I think it's just really having those teachers make sure that they know to communicate to those kids so they understand what's really happening if they miss a day. Otherwise, Oak Creek has been doing really well this year. We've got a lot of people getting certificates, especially with assistant childcare teachers. A lot of programming going on. We have Knight of the Month, as you see down there, with Holler and some of the kids. It's something where teachers get to nominate kids who they think is striving to do better and also going through the Knights Code. And of course, like we said, school spirit is such a big thing that we get to see at Oak Creek High School, and I think it's one of our biggest things. Otherwise, that is it. If you have any questions, go ahead.
Thank you so much.
How many, how many surveys did you get back of, I mean, of all the surveys that you sent out? I mean.
For now, we just kind of sent out one for now, just to see how kids would roll with the ball. We're hoping that especially as the year goes on, kids will actually do it more. We're trying to get it out there as many ways as possible. We sent it out to multiple teachers. Of course, you can't make a kid take a survey, so it's just kind of how we hope the kids to take it. But we hope maybe either each quarter or this quarter and then the fourth quarter, we send out another survey and see if kids either improve or they have other thoughts. So we're just hoping each survey could get better or just evolve.
How many did you get back? How many did you get back with this survey?
We got about 155 people, which is unfortunate because we do have a big school. But like we said, we can't force kids to take a survey. But the fact that we have a random sample is just, I think, is good enough because we're getting multiple different people back.
Good job.
Great job. Keep it up.
Well done.
If you need anything, let us know, please.
Can I ask one question? How many, how many kids are a part of the Knights Council?
I'm going to say roughly about 50 to 60. It is a very big club. We used to be a very small club, but we decided to expand it. We make different committees. So we're part of School Spirit Committee, Knight Squad Committee, Community Committee, and we also have a Knights Council Committee. So it's a very big group, but we expanded out to different kinds of sections.
And I think that really helps with like diversity and stuff, like getting multiple perspectives and being able to apply different peoples, because everybody's from different clubs, from different, you know, areas. So some people are in more sports, some people are in more academic clubs. So it's just really nice to have all of them to come together and be able to bring the school together.
Thank you.
Well done. Thank you. Very proud of you. Thank you.
All right, next on is the 26-27 calendar proposal.
So we'll invite Troy to come up to walk us through this and all the work that's been done to get us to this point.
All right, with the calendar, start with some simple things. Monday, August 31st is the first day, so DPI did approve our waiver in record time. I've never seen DPI move at the speed they moved, but it, they did. Last student day is Wednesday, June 9th. This calendar, because of the construction, we are going to have a two-week winter break. And those first two days, December 21 and 22, are added days for the construction. are added days for the construction company to do a whole host of things in the building to get it ready without people there. So that was the reason. Um, once we did this, we um, it didn't leave a lot of room to do things. It really forced a couple of things. It forced uh, us first to remove an October vacation day for students and staff. Um, and as we did that, we sta- I started getting comments from the high sc- as we surveyed. Um, everyone, what do you wanna do? Gave them a few options. Started getting comments from high school staff about, hey, we want the October vacation day. And what I explained to them in the um, information I sent out was the high school wants to end on a Thursday, Friday, Monday, Tuesday, or some, something that keeps the last two days next to each other on the calendar. They, what they really don't want is a Monday, Friday. The only way to get an October vacation day was to do that. So I surveyed only high school staff because I had heard from teachers in the past, I'd heard from administrators in the past, that high school teachers do not want this. They do not want a Monday, Friday, um, two last days of finals. They don't want that combination. Kids going home, talking about over the weekend, what was the final about in Mr. Hamblin's class, that type of thing. So overwhelmingly, the high school um, teachers came back and said, well, if it gets us an October vacation day, we can live with it. So we stuck back in the October vacation day. So what that means, short version for all of you, we have an oddity in this calendar. For the first time, um, semester one does not really end on a Friday or a Monday. Um, it's been, I shouldn't say that, the gold day, the day where students are um, not in school, but teachers are working, ends on a Friday or a Monday in almost every calendar we've had at semester. This one, now the gold day shows up on a Tuesday. So that means kids come in on Monday, in the high school, they're taking finals. Tuesday, the kids are off. Um, high school and middle school teachers are working on grades for semester. And elementary is doing some professional development in part of that day. So that's the real oddity to this calendar. Um, this calendar overwhelmingly was approved by our staff. I don't even know what it was, seventy-five, twenty-five, something like that. So they liked it. Um, high school staff said they're good with that, with that combo. Um, if, I think if everybody had their way and the calendar would line up differently, we would never do that. Because it just seems like parents prefer a Friday or a Monday. So that's the only oddity. Well, August thirty-first, start date too. Spring break should line up with other schools, so we should be good. Five days anyway.
Other questions?
Are you expecting parent pushback at all about that Tuesday off?
Never done it in my thirteen years here, so I don't know. No idea.
I wanna pushback.
Yeah, I, I would bet there's gonna be.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's my fault.
We're talking at the same time. Who was, anybody want to, questions?
Um, yeah, I think there may be pushback on that. I just back one day and off a couple days.
Off one day.
Off one day, but.
Not ideal.
My other question is um, related to um, conferences. Um, there just seems to be a lot of, like, the elementary seems to have a lot of, like a longer period of time for conference. Um, and I just was wondering why that is. Like they have, like their timeframe, like three-thirty to eight-thirty. That's a, that's a long time. Um, I was just wondering.
I'll jump in on that one. Feedback that he has a board, but I don't really got this in the past. Did talk to another board member about this. Or actually, several board members about this. This is what the parents wanted, and so I'm a big fan of if I was a, if I had elementary teacher, I, or kidding, kid, child in the district, I'd leave in at two o'clock in the afternoon from work, you know, I mean, night. It should be night. Cuz the elementary, to me personally, is probably the, and it should be in person. My personal opinion. Should not have a video conference. To me, the elementary is planning the root of the whole, the root of the whole plan. To me, it's the most important part of the conferences. The feedback that we got many years is what parents wanted. And I'm sorry, it's two days, two times out of the year, right?
Two long ones, yeah.
So we could do that, and you know, when they have snow days and, and you know, freezing weather warnings, get paid. And they're off. And/or we can come up with a different adjustment, and the whole district is off. Then, like I say, a Friday or a Monday, we can have parents' conferences at elementary, just have it from nine to eight one day. So I'm just saying, I'm fine how it is. That's my side of it, and it's two days, and it's two days. But I think it's fair and that's what parents want. And so it's close across the board from that.
What I was saying is I felt that the time that they're spending there is longer than anybody else. They're there from three-thirty to eight-thirty, where middle school is from four-thirty to eight. So it's a shorter timeframe for middle school, shorter timeframe for high school. So they're there for a longer time. When was the last time we've surveyed parents for conferences? Um, I know we, parents didn't like having half-days. Um, I, I, I know we changed it for that. Um, they didn't like, and, and I know we didn't have a big attendance when we had half, you know, half-days. Maybe it's been a while, maybe we should survey parents again. I don't know. I mean, I'm just what do parents think? That's what I'm asking.
So something to remember, um, that wasn't brought up here. Our teachers work under a hundred and ninety-day teacher contract. Hundred and eighty-five of those days are either teaching kids or the yellow days on the calendar, meaning professional development, or time we give them to do grading and other things. That leaves five days. Three of those days are holidays. So it's boom, they're just really not there. They're just paid three days um, as holiday pay. The other two days are made up of everything you see on the bottom of the calendar, which is parent-teacher conferences, open houses, um, things of that nature. In the middle school, that TA prep thing is where middle school teachers get together as a group in a, in a house and say, how's Troy doing? And all the teachers collaborate and what, what are they gonna talk about at conferences? But the other thing to keep in mind is all of these times when you add them all up, whether it's high school, middle school, elementary, all add up to about fifteen, fifteen and a half hours. So do you just arbitrarily reduce elementary? What do you do with that time? Do we just pay the teachers for? If we take two hours away, do they just still get the same pay? I, I don't know. Like some of the proposals that um, the OCA president uh, brought up, like putting a day off after the conferences. So do we do it just for them, or as you said, the middle school has conferences that are run till eight? And if you put a day in, then does that mean now we're up to June ninth, June tenth, June eleventh? How far do we go? So the, the way it's structured right now is that time, so if, for example, if somebody's gone on a conference day, they're sick, they have to use a day and a half of vacation. That's how our, our plan works for teachers. So I don't think it's as simple as just saying, cut time. And from what I um, remember from a previous superintendent was the elementary parents really eat up the conferences from what I understand and really want to attend, and they'll try to, so.
I was gonna say, Cheryl, I think it's important to understand when, when you're sitting down with those elementary teachers, like the middle school, you're just hitting one subject with a teacher. The elementary, you're hitting every subject and classroom behavior. It, so it's a lot more time that they need to sit down. So it's not just as like, eh, they need the more allotted time to sit down with those parents because that's the time required to get through it. So that's my guess, is probably why they have the more time scheduled, because that's what they need to get through what they need to get through.
Have we asked parents?
So I was, um, we re- I, I personally received a lot of emails about this as a board member from teachers, from the union. Um, I'm also a parent, as I state just about every meeting, and so I know I personally, um, I think Frank was kind of referencing me, like my husband, though he'll come into a board meeting to fix the IT, he will not take off work, he can't, to come to a daytime meeting. And so I really struggle because I want the teachers to be happy and I want to make sure that they are feeling heard, which is something that I felt was kind of the expression, is that they weren't feeling heard. So I appreciate all of the feedback that you've given tonight. I hope that you're giving that to the teachers and that I'm not hearing about that. Um, I don't, I just wanna go on record as saying that I understand both things, but I guess what we really need to figure out then with the calendar is, are we trying to make the parents happy, or are we trying to make the teachers happy? Like, we just talked about the random Tuesday off, that that, we don't know if that's gonna make parents unhappy, but let's pretend it does. So
I doubt it, but.
I, I, I'm just gonna pretend, I mean, um, but so I guess my, my point is, is that I wanna see us unified of either, okay, when we make this calendar, we're gonna be looking at teachers and teachers' feedback, or we're going to be looking at parents and parents' feedback, because if we try to make both happy, everybody's miserable. Um, and so, but I personally, I will say, as an elementary school parent, I have friends in other districts, I, I would be concerned that daytime conferences, that my husband is then going to feel obligated to take off work to go if he wants to see my daughter's um, conference, because all of the nighttime ones got set up. Like even this year, I had to take a seven forty-five appointment because all of the good times were taken. So.
Uh, we got uh, Oak Creek uh, OCR update?
You have to wear their hats when you do this presentation.
We have a cheering committee back here. For those of you who don't know who I am, I'm Heather Ryan, and I work in the rec department here for the school district and the city of Oak Creek. And I have along with me Samantha Whipaduski, who's a coordinator for us, for our childcare and development. And Joe Shane, who was also referenced earlier, he's the um, a coordinator in our sports and wellness area. Also the high school boys and girls swim coach. So he's notorious around here. Um, since twenty-twenty, when we joined with the, the um, the platform of the rec department from the city, I have been offering an update on where we stand from community ed and rec and to both the school board and to the city council. And I appreciate this time to be able to talk to you and give you those updates. I don't know if it's worth seeing. I'll walk you through what I have and share what I know, but the information that I'm giving to you is from the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five season, so that ends um, June thirtieth. So we've had a lot of activities since um, July one that's not included in these numbers. Um, and we're excited about what next year we'll bring too. But that midsummer cutoff is really interesting for us because that's the middle of our busy season, if you will. Are we gonna show it? Okay. Oh, look at, even the animation works. So um, we've had eleven thousand one hundred and twenty-eight people in seven hundred and seventy-five programs during the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Um, that's our biggest ever, and we're exhausted by it, but also really excited by it. Look at that. So our, every year I offer up a scorecard kind of of how we're doing. We look at our different programs in different categories. So enrichment programming are those activities like our cooking classes, or our mad science program, or our our um, art classes um, for both uh, adults and for students. And then we look also at childcare and development. That is with everything that Sam's done for our students in camp, in our aspire program, in our school days out, in our parents' night out programming. Um, our aquatics program, everything that happens in the pool. Uh, sports and wellness, which would be all of our league sports and camps for both adults and for students. And then our community facility access is the bottom section. Um, we do also make our facilities available to the community outside of school activities and our use. And so we um, coordinate those rental agreements and make sure that the facilities are available to the community when it's possible. So we record what those hours are. And also access to the community um, for our open activities, like open basketball, um, open gym time that we coordinate. So on the very right side, uh, where you see the green marks, that means that it's trending up. Red means trending down. And we did talk about this as a team too, going, maybe we should have like a yellow, like it's maybe going up or going down, but not that much. Um, so some of those reds are really not red, they're like pink. And some of those greens are like bright green, we're really excited about. But um, our enrichment area, our adult enrichment programs, um, this last year show a slight decline. And we can look at it very simply, some of those instructors that we had no longer offered the classes, and we didn't have enough time to be able to recoup to find a gluten-free cooking teacher, right? And so she, one person could mean ten programs with ten people in each, that's a big number of people that wasn't participating this year that had in the past. We also did some programming for adults, like our bingo program in the summer, that Salvation Army started taking over. So we didn't do it any longer, and those numbers were reflected in some of those declines. However, our childcare and development area, if you look at those thing, of that category, those numbers have really soared. Um, school days out, we increased, we were able to increase the number of students that were in our programs. We also started doing a program called Parents Night Out, which is kind of like um, a childcare service one Friday a month where parents need um, some extra care for their children. They can join us in after-school, um, five o'clock to nine o'clock, some pizza, movie, hang out with trusted people to watch them. Um, and the other area that has really seen some growth is our camp OC program. Our summer camp program has really gotten to be very popular. Um, so those have seen a big increase. And strangely enough, our aquatics program continues to grow. We don't have anywhere else to go with it. We still have those six lanes, um, and we still have those times, but we were able to get, get even more people involved um, through recreational swim club, where we've really seen a, a big increase. So those are our big growth areas. Programs and participation overall, um, our programs, the information's on the left-hand graph there. Our programs have increased overall and continue to grow, and our participants on the right side also continue to grow. Those are just counts of people in our programs and um, offerings. The next is our community facility use. You can see that that number declined a little bit from the year prior, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four. Again, it's one of those situations where um, actually it was a, a commercial, a, a for-profit organization that didn't do uh, a ball diamond rentals for extended periods of time. And so you can see that those numbers start to go down a little bit. So we can, we see what those events are and we can kind of monitor that a little bit. Um, I'm not too worried about it. I would worry if we weren't seeing as many people within our own community maybe using our spaces. So there's also this big part that we really care about a, a bit too, is our fiscal performance. So everything within um, community ed and rec is within Fund Eighty. And we also include the Performing Arts and Education Center in our um, fiscal performance numbers here. So we're self, a self-sustaining rec department, which is kind of unheard of. We do get a tax levy. The tax levy is due for our school resource officers. And we also get um, about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year from the city of Oak Creek to continue programming for them. And we are grateful for the, that contribution because that helps us with printing of our catalogs and mailing those catalogs, getting marketing pieces out, and helps some of our um, staff to be employed. But our big programs, like our aspire program and our school days out program, you'll see um, really provides us a nice space for our um, our, our revenue, adult activities. Um, that includes our Forever Young Club program, which means here every Monday, if you'd like to join them, you're more than welcome. Um, every Monday from nine o'clock until two-thirty, um, and that includes a lunch and people get together and socialize, but that's not a revenue generator for us at all. Um, youth activities and camps, um, our aquatics program is s- is, is stable and growing. Our summer camp is a great revenue producer for us. Enrichment program, as you can see, the OCPAC this year also saw some revenues. They are sustaining in that they are covering the, the permanent are covering the, the permanent staff of their technical director, which, um, we just hired a new technical director last week, and, um, getting his feet wet right now with a lot of different activities that are starting up for the season. Um, so overall, you can see that we are, we were trying to go for like a, a ten percent, um, fund balance, and we're a little above that, which is great, and we want to make sure that we have that fund balance, because we never know what those expenses might be, we have a plan for what we would like to use it on. For 2025-26, those fund balance projects are to the renovation of the West Middle School fields, um, and the replacement of two driver's ed vehicles. So we're hoping to get those within the month. So you'll see some really nice-looking vehicles on the road, hopefully they stay really nice-looking for a really long time. Um, I always worry about that. Um, so anyway, we're looking healthy financially, and we want to continue to move in that direction. And I wouldn't even say gently used at this point, no. But you know they're gonna hold up. They're available on a government website, what is it? There you go. We often talk about the impact that Oak Creek Rec has on our community. We talk about the children that we get involved with, the seniors that we help keep fit, um, but what we don't talk about is life after Oak Creek Rec, and the impact that we have on our district staff. So right now, um, in our district, we have eight people that were Oak Creek Rec people, that came up through the, the ranks and have proven themselves enough to be, uh, full-time employees of our district as, um, let's see here, we have a guidance counselor, FIAED teachers, elementary teachers. Um, we also have those, um, that have left Oak Creek and gone and have, are gainfully employed in other districts, and we have a slew of other people that are currently working for Oak Creek Rec, that are studying education, and are gonna be hopefully joining us down the road. So we're really proud of the work that we do to get them, um, back in our community and serving people. And I have a quote, it's kind of a long one, but "I'm very thankful for the opportunities I had through the Oak Creek Rec program, as they had such an impact on shaping both my career path and my skills as an educator. I first joined Oak Creek Rec as a junior in high school, working in the aspire after-school program in Edgewood Elementary, where I built meaningful relationships with students and staff, and discovered how much I loved working with children. That following summer, I became, I began working at Camp OC. I quickly realized how much I enjoyed creating engaging experiences for students. Over the next three summers as a camp counselor and four summers as a team lead, I developed strong leadership and organizational skills, running activities, guiding staff, and managing groups of students. These experiences gave me confidence in working with diverse learners, taught me the importance of teamwork and communication, and showed me how to adapt to challenges, all skills I use every day in my classroom. Working with OCR throughout high school and college also gave me a deeper connection to the Oak Creek community, which is part of why I wanted to pursue my teaching career here. Today, as a third-grade teacher at Deerfield Elementary, I can clearly see how my time with OCR prepared me for this role, and I'm so grateful for the foundation it gave me in becoming the educator I am today." From Mia Hamps. So we have some really great people that work for us, and it's just the beginning. So, some new programs that you have either seen this summer, or that you will be seeing, um, an adaptive swim program. Joe and team, Sunday afternoons, um, have hosted six students for each session, um, in a quiet environment, one-on-one, to be able to learn how to swim, that may not be the ones that would want to be part of a large group of students in a large class. So it's a one-on-one adaptive swim program that he offers. Our parents' night out program is new this year. Family open swim, um, one Friday a month, we're opening up the pool for free for families to be able to come and swim. Uh, tree climbing, as you can see here, actually, one of those you might recognize, Sam, it's her son Owen, um, was our tree climbing program. We worked with the city of Oak Creek and, uh, arborist who, with Tree Top Explorers, who does this all over southeastern Wisconsin, um, pruned the trees at Miller Park to make them appropriate for us to be able to use. And then after some negotiation with the legal counsel at the city of Oak Creek, we were able to offer the tree climbing class. Um, but it is, it really was popular, and we're gonna be offering it again in May, and now they're a little bit easier about us moving those things around. But the kids, the people, I shouldn't say kids, because there were some adults that did it as well, they loved it. And to go, it was pretty amazing to see people just hanging in the trees at Miller Park. Um, and then another program we offered this fall was a girls' NFL flag football program. We had, um, eighteen girls from Oak Creek and Franklin, second and third grade, and fourth and fifth grade, that practiced here in Oak Creek, and then played at West Dallas, West Milwaukee every Sunday morning, um, with another, we had teams from West Dallas, West Milwaukee, Greendale, Menominee Falls, Cudahoga, South Milwaukee, Nicolay, and, um, Whitefish Bay. And they had a great time, and we're actually trying to get a, um, a grant from the National Park and Rec Association to be able to fund it for next year. Um, and we are trying to get them to go to a regional competition in Green Bay hosted by the Packers, which we're seeing right now, um, the Packers, to have a regional flag football competition. So it's kind of cool. What's next? So obviously our challenges, and I put the facility up there just so we can remember, we'll go back and go, remember when that was our pool? Yeah, that's, we're, we're so excited about what's ahead for us. But we do have the challenge of our facilities not being available to us during the day. Um, we do rent some space over at Parkway for some of our classes, and we have graciously taken over, or, I don't know, they graciously let us allow, uh, let us have, um, the district office boardroom for some of our music classes during the week. Um, but facilities are a challenge, so we're looking forward to having some of those community rooms in the new facility. Um, staffing is always a challenge, we've got a lot of things going on in a lot of places, and for us to be able to keep consistent staff, that are quality staff, is a challenge. Um, some opportunities we have, you often hear of outsourcing, and we have outsourced a lot of programs to Skyhawk, which is a contracted agency we work with for a lot of our, um, early childhood programs. We're gonna try to start doing those internally if we can, kind of speaks opposite of the staffing, but we're hoping to be able to do that internally. It will reduce the cost for the community, it'll help us keep consistency with our staff, and, um, and still provide quality programs. The other, what, some other things, registration software, we are looking at ways to make it easier for people to register, making it easier online, um, making it more intuitive, making it, uh, connect with our reservation systems for facilities, and making it easier for people to use. And then obviously, an opportunity with our new facilities that we have, so. Last one is just if you have any questions. I also wanted to point out, these folks were on the cover of our, um, summer catalog. Maddie Sigal cow is on the left, she's the granddaughter of, um, Don and Diane, and Don and Diane are, are in our Forever Young Club every Monday here, and Maddie was our, uh, aspire staff person and worked our summer camp. So it was fun to be able to have them on our cover, Grandma, Grandpa, and a lovely lady who went off to be joining the military. Any questions that you have? Yes, Cheryl?
With the, um, how, what's the track usage like when, since we've been opening up the track? How has that been?
Inconsistent, I'll say. Um, we've had some Sundays that were, no one was there, and then the last Sunday, I think we had ten people.
Okay.
But that was the most that we had throughout the summer, maybe four or five people. There were, but there were several Sunday, there's, that were, there was no one there.
And then how about the, um, the, the girls', um, STEM program that they had last summer, the summer school? Was that run through you, or was that run through the district?
That was not through us, that would have been maybe the summer school program.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, review of upcoming agendas?
Please, you have to kill that light there. All right, for the November twenty-fourth meeting, action items will be the 2026-27 calendar approval, the middle school art course proposal, the consent agenda, employment, uh, employee premium share holiday for December, and then information item, school improvement plan spotlights, so we will have Cedar Hills and Oak Creek High School with us. We will also have the 2024-25 state accountability measures for ACT, Advanced Placement, Forward, and the Accountability Report cards, uh, October budget report, 2026-2027 tax levy budget discussion, first reading of school board policy update, section 5,000, and busing survey results and discussion. And December eighth, um, for the school board meeting, we have action item, the 2024-25 financial audit report, the start time changes and bus tier modification approval, OC virtual for the 2026-2027 school year, it's getting to be that time of year, there'll be consent agenda, information items, fall athletics and activities review, so Scott Holler will be here for that, the drill log annual review, and school improvement plan spotlights of Forest Ridge Elementary and Edgewood Elementary, and those would be the last, um, of the school improvement plan spotlight, so you will have heard from all ten schools, uh, by the end of the night on December eighth.
Motion to adjourn?
Whitman moves to adjourn.
Give you a second.
All right, Meredith, you got the floor?
I'll comment.
Anybody else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say aye. Thank you, everyone, have a good night.